By delegating to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just had a quick notice. So I just wanted to congratulate Steve Culpa, who's a teacher at Dayton Rehoboth. He received the educator of the year award from the Taunton Area Chamber of Commerce for 2021. So congratulations. Does anybody need a copy agenda?
I'll take one if you have an answer.
I need one, please.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Are we getting fancy?
Does he teach what it did?
Yes, he's a special ed teacher.
Yep.
And a baseball coach.
Wow.
The first item is just an update, and I think I know the answer, but anywhere from Bristol Aggie on replacement for?
They don't have anyone.
Okay.
We have someone in mind. Out to a family that has a pretty involved role in this community, and they own a big farm. We haven't reached out to her yet.
Okay.
She serves on the library committee.
Okay. Do they have a connection with Bristol Aggie or?
No, but what we're, one of the focuses is farming.
Right.
Mike and I, when we talked about this this afternoon, we may have to approach this a different way, rather than the Aggie coming to us because of the commitment of meetings, that we go to the Aggie. And whether it be myself, because I'm the liaison with Bristol Aggie, or this person that we bring on board would take, you know, have meetings with them and invite them to send a representative for events or an item on the agenda. You know what I'm saying?
Right.
It'll be a little more difficult, rather than having someone right here that's at the Aggie, but we still will have that connection with the Aggie. There are many services that the Aggie provides, that they're still willing to provide. It's more of a commitment of coming to the meetings, rather than helping us. Or, you know, one day, like John is planning to do with the businesses, having informational sessions for farmers. That's something that we can develop internally. What areas of interest do we have as a group? And then reaching out to the Aggie as a resource to help us with that. I think we can get creative with that. But before we do that, I'd like to see, at some point in the near future, a segment of our meeting being dedicated to agriculture. And maybe to someone from the Agricultural Commission in Dayton to our meeting. What their plans are, what their goals are, and how we can work together. And then having that in mind, reaching out to the Aggie as a resource. This problem that we're having with the Aggie is the time to the meetings.
Is there an agricultural committee or something?
Oh, yes. Sure. Oh, yes. Matter of fact, they met.
About two weeks ago.
Yes. Ken Arujo is on that committee.
Okay.
Now, I think Brett is the liaison.
He is.
For it. Oh, I mean, we could have Brett, or maybe we could reach out to Ken. We were thinking of reaching out to Rita and Ken Arujo and see if one of them would want to serve on this board. And they have a lot of ties to this community, both politically, economically. And they have shown great interest, contributing contributions. Like, that family is donating all the eggs for the Easter egg hunt. So they're really committed to this community.
That's good. That's beautiful.
Yep. Brett. Gone that this week.
Okay. The next thing, which is one of the most important things to get done tonight, is Serpeth had sent a contract, which I also have copies for, if people need a copy.
Please.
Yes, sure.
Oops, that's Mike. Sorry. So Mike would like to bring this up at the next selectmen's meeting, which is not this week, but next week, for their approval, and then Mike actually technically has to sign it. But this is the contract with Serpeth regarding the deliverables. And it's pretty much in line with, you know, the things that have been discussed, although it's spelled out in much more detail. Mike's been back and forth with them on irony miss out. I did join one call myself as well. But Mike, I don't know if you want to, like, give us a brief overview of, you know, what's in the contract in terms of, you know, commitments or any issues that I'm aware of, but.
No, you're right, Jen. So what's in the packet, I also put up on the screen as well. So there is an agreement between, a proposed agreement between the town and Serpeth. As we know, Serpeth is also funding approximately $40,000 of this project as well. The other $25,000 is being funded by the state through the Community Compact Program. So this really, this agreement, I just really sets out expectations between the town and Serpeth, you know, with regard to the number of meetings, of working meetings that Serpeth will attend with the DDIC and other town officials, like the Planning Board. They're also going to do, they're also going to work with us to facilitate our community feedback forms. So that's envisioned in here as well. With presentations, with civic engagement, our civic engagement opportunities to help inform our efforts in a survey as well. So like, as Jen mentioned, we've been back and forth with them. I also included in the packet that we sent over some of the questions that I have for Serpeth. So as, so as we really, just wanted to make sure we understood what exactly our expectations will be. Oh, you know, and I'm very, very comfortable with where we are with this. And so you can see the expectation specifically for the town of Dayton, that we would identify a contact person, a person who would act as a liaison. So between us and Serpeth, and also to other town department boards and committees for this project, we would be responsible for meeting agendas and posting requirements as well. And we would be also responsible for dedicating space on our municipal website for the project as well. But, yeah, like, this is, I mean, in my opinion, very straightforward. It just really helps to define the expectations that will guide our work with Serpeth over the next year and a half or so. So, but again, one of the things we wanted to do was just really make sure we get feedback from the DDIC, because, I mean, this whole project, we want to make sure we're all on the same page and, oh, you know, I mean, and all of us have the ability to shape this project like we really envision it to be shaped. Any questions?
If I don't mind, if you don't mind, I would just like to reiterate, Mike, you know, the brief conversation that we had, you know, offline last week, which was about the target, the target completion dates, right? And I just hope that, you know, we have some type of idea of what, when each of these phases is looking to be done, right? And it doesn't state that in the contract. So, you know, I was wondering if we were going to, you know, pursue that or not, and that's, you know, whatever. I was just thinking that in terms, again, managing expectations, that we have an idea of when this stuff's going to happen.
Yeah, John, I completely agree. And that is, and that is on my list to reach out and follow up and get that clarification with Serpeth on. So we do have that expectation. I mean, obviously, it won't be part of the agreement per se, but just some, all the guiding target date that we can all plan on going forward.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion? If not, somebody wants to make a motion that we recommend to the Board of Selectmen that they authorize Mike to sign this on the town's behalf?
I'll make that motion.
Yep.
Second?
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Closed. Mentions. Ayes have it. Thank you. The next item is a review of the draft questionnaire for the spring/summer Bristol Aggie Network event. That, it's really a Taunton Area Chamber of Commerce event that John and other people on the chamber are spearheading. But you had come up with some draft, a draft survey that we could distribute during that?
Yes.
I, you asked for feedback. I gave you some feedback, which I included my updated feedback in the packet for tonight. But I do have copies if people need that.
Just for whatever it's worth, I'm glad I actually voted for you to read.
How did you develop this?
I did, to be honest. Ninety percent of it is stolen from other economic surveys that small towns have done that I found on the web. But I think this, and it's a draft. So what I would ask, actually, if people have some feedback, great. But that you give permission for John, particularly because he's trying to rope Berkeley into this. I don't know how you plan to actually do a joint Dayton-Berkley meeting with a questionnaire that's specific to Dayton, or if you're going to try to blend the two, to try to get bigger feedback. I don't know how you want to manage that. But I was just going to ask that if you're comfortable with myself and John working out the survey, as opposed to bringing, I mean, maybe we can get back here with the final, but in the meantime, just work something out, knowing that at the end of the day, it's a Taunton Chamber of Commerce event. So it's really what you want to do at the end of the day. But, you know, you're, you're asking us for opinions, which is great, so.
Absolutely. Yes.
Yeah.
Were you going to invite Rollwith, or is it just Berkeley?
We were just, no, we hope this is actually not part of the Taunton Area Chamber of Commerce, like, district, if you will. I think that they're from
Atterboro?
Like Atterboro or Seekonk or something like that. Yeah. So I was not planning where. It really is, the Chamber president is from Berkeley. And we felt that it's good to get Berkeley and Dayton together, because we have a lot of, I don't know, you know, symbiotic relationship, if you would. And so that's the reason why we were thinking about having those two towns for this little business event, right? And we also wanted to, you know, share the beautiful Bristol Aggie school facility with the local businesses, so that they know what's, what is here and what's available to them. So we thought it would be good to just get as many local businesses as we can to come and participate. And, you know, we were hoping that we would be able to get something, each town would be able to support table or something that would be able to talk to the benefits of the town, to the small businesses as well. So, so that's what we're, that's what we're thinking of. We were thinking that we would give the, a, the survey. And, you know, it's interesting, because, you know, it does, it, the, I think we should work together on bringing these two together, because I think that we were really looking for is how, how some local businesses do feel about infrastructure upgrades. The thing we're talking with Serpeth about, right? Serpeth, this, this economic brief says, you know, we've got a lot of work to do in terms of bringing business in, infrastructure work to do. So hopefully, part of this survey would talk about their desire to support some of that and live with that and that sort of thing.
As I look at the survey, the one question that I don't see entertain this is, is an additional question, has to do with sewer. How important is it? What impact would have vision to come today?
Yeah, I think I did it kind of, it's not called out specifically, but there's a list of what are the factors that are attractive for your business on a scale of one to five? And one of them is availability of necessary utilities and infrastructure, water, sewer, et cetera.
Yeah, yeah.
So it's on the back page. And I could call it something real specific, but.
When you, were you thinking of having a place in the survey, though, that would identify, where the person would identify if they're a Dayton business or Berkeley business?
Yeah, sure. Yeah.
That data?
We can also do that.
They may have some different challenges, and it would be difficult to.
And it might be nice, and we would have to ask in advance for permission from the selectmen to have a Facebook page, which is not a big deal. We just have to ask to actually put the survey on the Dayton Facebook page, so that you don't have to stand there and fill out a piece of paper or walk back and mail it to us. It's like, here, you can fill it out now. It's on our Facebook page.
Could even set up?
Yeah, I mean.
They can do it right there. We set up a few laptops or something.
Exactly, that too, or they could just go home and do it, but it just gets that much more.
Come as quick as we can.
Yes. Yep. Okay. Yep.
I had, originally, back in January, provided John with a list of businesses in town, which there are far more than I actually realized. There are like over 220. I mean, a lot of them are small businesses. And when I looked at the list, because it had a list of owners and the owner's addresses, ninety percent of all the businesses in town are
Home-based, right?
Home-based. I mean, because the business address and the home address are identical. And then a few more are actually like a couple houses, house numbers off, so like, they live right next to their business. So, I mean, that just shows you, I think, where ninety percent or more of biz is small, home-based.
Which actually becomes an issue, because the businesses are not doing much for the town of Dayton in terms of tax revenue, right?
It's different. Well, I mean, but I think that if that's true, then that helps us. We're talking revenue. We end up having to focus on the bigger places, the mill and Jenica and Anheim and the big places that bring in, you know, the, well, exactly their percentages that they bring in versus all the small businesses combined, I don't know. But it's Mike, and maybe we could get that information at some point, so to help inform us. But, um, I just kind of point that bringing in like a whole bunch of new small businesses may be healthy for the town, but not necessarily in a really massive revenue perspective.
If they're going to be running businesses out of, out of their home or their garage or whatever, it don't do nothing for us. This is the appropriate time to bring that up.
Let's sub, to, to Jen.
I was approached by someone last week to see if I knew of an area that they could put up a building, a 20,000 square foot building, to run this business out of.
Is these the people that are leaving the mill or leasing?
Yes.
Okay, so they, their, a contract is up, are coming up, and they want to probably move out of the mill, and they want a new spot, so.
Yeah.
I had heard about that, yeah.
And I was at the town hall today, looking at the the land use committee, you know, that sometimes they put out, land out for auction, and that's not going to happen anytime soon. And then I went down to the Planning Board, seeing the office manager to see if anywhere in the town she could actually see a piece of land that could become available to put a building like that. And so far, nothing. So it's, it's, I have to talk to Jim still to see if he has any other tool in his back pocket that may work. But I don't, I don't think it is. First, I thought that all of 138 is zoned residential, a mixed-use business. And then beyond that, in most of the areas, it's zoned industrial. I thought we could come up with a piece of property like that, even if this person had to buy the house to get access to the industrial land in the back. But I don't see any on, on any of that, you know? It's, it's sad that, that we have to not do something for this person, you know? It's, but I haven't given up. I just.
What is their timeline?
Well, I think we could, his lease is up in a year. But I think if need be, I think we could talk to those people there, see if they will give him like another year or a year and a half on the top of that, to give him ample time to do what he needs.
I was curious. Winthrop Street, near Zeke's. What is that zone is?
Winthrop Street, which is Route 44.
Right.
There is some area there, but it didn't go through. We, the town did not vote to do something like that, but voted against it.
So it's residential still?
Still residential. We did try, though. We did try to put that through.
And on Williams says you're across Bird Street. Obviously, there's businesses there now. A lot of them appear to be storage facilities. Like, there's one that looks like it's just telephone poles and
Where are we?
Like, across from Anheim. So like, Cox Automotive is across from Anheim, and then next to it, there seems to be just open land that apparently, that gets used from time to time for different storage. There were telephone poles there at one point, Amazon vans.
Yeah, no, that, I think that guy came into the Planning Board a few years ago. So he either rezoned that. There was, there was a reason why he did that. He wanted to put a car lot next door to where the telephone poles are. And where the telephone poles, I don't think that was, he wasn't zoned accordingly? Or he thought of one thing to, to put that in, so that he could store those telephone poles. Because what he did is he just leased that land out to the company that's doing that, so. But I don't think he could have done it then. So he came into the board to try to get a permit to do some of that. I don't remember exactly what it is, but we can go back and look.
Is that a site that, perhaps is not properly zoned now, but would not be an issue?
Uh, no, I don't think that would, that could not be done for something like that. I think that was rezoned already from whatever it was to, it can, it can be used now for growing marijuana, not grown, yeah, both, selling and.
Williams, yeah.
Yeah, so.
If you have another chance to talk to this person, could you recommend that they work with a commercial real estate professional that would probably?
Well, it's, it's not the point of, that he can't find a place to go into. It's the point of trying to keep him in Dayton.
Well, yeah, that's what I mean. So I didn't say outside of Dayton. I mean, a commercial real estate, not developer, but Realtor, right? So there are Realtors that.
Specialize in that?
Right.
Well, I can tell you that no matter what they specialize in, if the land is not available, the Planning Board or, you know, we would know better than most what is zoned what for, to do what. Do you see what I'm saying?
I guess I see it from the commercial side, right? You might see it from the political side, right? The side of the town government side. I see it from a commercial side, and that the commercial real estate people usually do have a good pulse on what's going on. So, I mean, you know, I'm not sure. I just wanted to suggest it, and, and.
And honestly, I will never say no to anything, but the whole thing is the zoning bylaws are there. The, the map is there.
Yep.
And from my, whatever understanding that I have, I do not see anything on hand right now that would be good for him to put that. In fact, we even thought about the house that's being taken down on the corner of Main Street and 138 there, by the, even the store, that, that's not zoned accordingly.
Excepted to that, yeah.
Yeah. And if the store in the house that was zoned by the diocese, and we could rezonate it, or they could go for a zoning variance, maybe, maybe. But I still don't have the total square footage of those two properties.
Is the plumbing, the plumbing, well, the supply store, the Dayton hardware, it's not zoned?
It's, I think that's a zoned business, isn't it?
Not industrial.
No, the, I've even thought about asking him if he would be willing to maybe sell some of his product, have like a storefront there, which I doubt that he will want to do that, but. And then it would be both manufacturing and
Retail?
Retail, so it would become a business, a different, you know what I'm saying?
That's ridiculous. Yeah.
You just change it a little bit, then.
I was just wondering.
I'm sorry?
Down, down the road, would it be okay to revisit the Route 44 area near Zeke's in regards to a change, a zoning change to, was that, that wasn't, was that going to be commercial or just?
That is commercial there.
It is commercial there. So what was the problem?
The people voted against doing it industrial.
The Butters. I believe the Butters spoke up at the town meeting and against the town to vote against it, yeah.
They don't want it to be industrial.
Well, you can't say that I blame the people for that, because a person could come in and say, I want to put a factory of whatever next door to their house. And it's kind of a little asking too much, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
So we don't have a lot of area for potential
No.
industrial use.
So isn't that what Serpeth is going to do as part of this work? Is potentially recommend areas where the town should change the zoning?
Yeah.
Mike?
Yeah.
So, yeah, so let me, so it's a funny question to what John, I think, just mentioned as well. That's exactly what the intent of this whole, oh, you know, endeavor that we're, that we're charting out on. So we'll seek to do really help to get, define and get buying, community buying by community input. So on what we, so on where different zoning aspects are, different zoning opportunities that we might be able to redefine. So this whole process is seeking to exactly help us define them and also build the needed, and through our community outreach that we're going to be doing as well, help to, you know, to build the community support that would be needed to do exactly. Help to, you know, to build the community support that would be needed to do exactly what we're talking about.
So if there's an update on this, I mean, you can talk about it at the future meetings and.
Absolutely.
You're, that's plan Lenny, you're both, you know.
No, I, I would even be willing to ask Lenny to, to come in and attend one of the meetings just to see, you know, at the time that we talk about this. Just so that if any of us have any questions for him, I, I think he would be willing to do that. But having my doubts at this point here. I've got one piece of land that he could put that building in right now. But it just sold last year. And the person that bought it, I'm not 100% sure. They are not sure, they're not, they don't know what the property was all about. I honestly believe that they didn't know what they were getting into. That's my.
More details because we're just drawing a little far afield from our agenda. So I said, no more details about that because we're just going a little far afield of our agenda. So, and so if we want to have another discussion about that, we can put it on the agenda. Just to close out the survey.
Yes, I would, I would like to go back to the point that you made with the home-based businesses. 90% and, and the fact that we don't get a lot of tax revenue from home-based businesses. I wonder if the work that we do with Serp Ed, we should bring up or suggest, see if there's an opportunity for Dayton to build a, say, a small office complex, like a, like a rental, like a small business office rental building. So in other words, if someone's looking for, you know, a small office space, right? Or a shared conference area, right? Where home businesses don't have those capabilities. You can build a small facility, you rent it out by, you know, office space, shared conference space. Maybe a, you know, a kind of a conference room type of thing that is that. And I'm, I'm wondering if that would be beneficial to the town.
Existence in the town?
I'm listening.
Questioning whether or not Jim Agia may not be able to help us in that with the upstairs vacancies that he has in the plaza.
Okay, bring in additional tax revenue?
That would be a good thing for him.
Right.
And it would be a very good thing for anyone that wants to do that because he's got the ample space. He's got an elevator there that goes to the second floor.
And so it's accessible, right?
Yeah, just having tenants in, not living tenants, but tenants of like an office or is this the septic as he's got it?
The only thing is the septic that he has there. I don't know if it's got the potential to take on additional.
And of course, I mean, we're throwing it out. He would have to say, this is a viable business for me. I mean, it might be he gets one person a month. It's like, this is really worth it.
I, I do understand what you're saying. A few years ago, I was getting into a venture with someone. On Route 44, there was a good-sized house that was up for sale by the town. And we were looking into buying that. And that was the intent to do that type of a business. Because it was close to Providence, you know, Taunton, all of those areas there. You know, someone is coming in from Providence to do a meeting instead of going all the way into Taunton. It would be halfway, let's meet at my office or whatever you want to call it, in such and such area.
Yeah.
I just wonder if appropriate, I could reach out to Jim, have him talk with you and maybe you could have a meeting and discuss what potential use that he has.
I'm sure he would want to do a, what is the demand?
Right.
For that, because that, that's.
Add it to the survey.
I mean.
And I would reach out to Jim and let him know.
We're not talking peanuts to, to try to do something like that, you know? Even though he already has the, the space, he still has to do all of the random.
Build out, some build out, yeah.
And I know we're only mentioning Jim and there probably, we thought about other ways you could accomplish the same thing. But having him have input on how that question is raised when we add it to the survey is not a bad idea. You know, like if he has a certain way of like, how the survey would really help him gauge demand? He can, that he wants the question phrased a certain, I don't have a, I wouldn't have an issue with that.
You don't mind if I give you your contact information, John, do you?
Oh, no, 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 no.
In terms of the survey though, I don't know if I need a motion since it's still a draft. Just saying that John and I will continue to work on it and we'll just bring the final back when we get it. I don't think I really need a motion to do that, do I?
Doesn't matter to me.
You know, again, I just have a quick question, if that's okay?
Yeah.
So, so on the original draft that was speculated by John, there was one question that asked, like, are you, uh, like, are you aware of the EDIP program to provide tax incentives for Dayton businesses?
Yes.
I'm not sure if that question may on to the final version. But I would just want to add some context to that question because the EDIP program is not full of any business. It's really limited to businesses that seek to grow or expand.
Okay.
That they're currently in. So maybe, again, I'm not sure if that question is still there, but if it is, say that you are aware of the EDIP program in Dayton to provide tax incentives to Dayton businesses for growth and expansion. So like that way, we can find what it is and we don't, I will set up, set up an expectation that really isn't there.
Can I interrupt Mike? One second, can I interrupt Mike? So I think the online handbook, which I don't know if you authored or you inherited and updated, but that is for a business, new business coming to town, has a great write-up about those two, you know, programs.
Yes.
And we either sent, include a link to that or print out those page or two. That's the write-up included with the survey, one of those two things, I think covers. Because it's really a very good description.
Yeah, no, no, I agree. I just, so I just wanted to add some context around what EDIP means. So a business who has never heard of it, so they don't immediately think they're, you know, they're, this exists as a benefit to them and then they have to be let down slowly type of thing, you know? But I agree, yeah, all defined in the business guide. So that's, so that's perfect then. The last question comment I have, so at the end, oh, you know, the other question about the impression of the chamber. So, but also as a way to help inform our efforts here on the committee. Or even something like, the town of Dayton is working with Serp Ed on an economic development plan. Would you be interested in helping to shape our efforts? So maybe we get additional buy-in through the survey. We could have, we can gain a greater understanding about, so what businesses might actually want to take part in this effort to a greater degree.
Yeah, okay. Good, that's good, Mike. Thank you.
Yeah.
Have a discussion about the, the draft of the survey.
He's doing a great job.
The next item, which is, I just had a separate line item, but planning activities for this summer. Alluded to it, John, when you said you'd like to have the town. I think when you and I talked, we thought maybe even the Trails Committee or something like that. Have a table or a presence of, you know, something that says, we're the town, come talk to us. And I don't know exactly what that would, would be, but I know that when we first brought this up, Lenny, you thought that, you know, having a selectman there at this event would be a great idea. So at least one or two or if not all three selectmen. So that, and they're conspicuous that they're town selectmen and then our, our presence there so in some way. But I know if you had something more in mind than that.
So that was, that was our goal, is that we would invite the selectmen. We're also planning on inviting our, our representatives, our, so our state representatives and state senator. So we would look for the local politicians, if you will. And the other thing I wanted to address, oh, shoot, it escaped me right now, but the Trails, what I think our view is, we would love to promote Dayton as a spot for business. So whatever is good for Dayton to promote to businesses is great. I mean, I think that what, one of the things I've been hearing as a theme about Dayton is that it's a rural community, it's a farm and agricultural community. And so, and so we're, we're not up for like big, big business, right? We don't want an Amazon warehouse, we don't want, you know, that sort of thing. So what we want to do is understand, how do we promote the nice features of Dayton in terms of like the Trails Committee and the Trails, the, you know, the rural aspects of this? It's a great spot to live. So how do you promote that so that you bring businesses to this town? And so that's what I, that's the goal that I would like to do, right?
I was wondering if we could add someone from the school department, whether it be chairman of the school committee, which will be a Dayton person this very soon, and when they reorganize, or see even the superintendent. You're going to find that this superintendent, very energetic and reaching out for a lot of community support.
I think, so I'm totally open to suggestion, but again, coming from the perspective of we're a chamber of commerce trying to facilitate networking and business involvement in the community. And I thought, we think the best way to do that is getting people together and, you know, you know, spending a couple of hours, right? And, you know, being able to network. It's really a network and event and an opportunity for small business people to meet their local politicians and also for people that might be interested in, you know, starting the business here. Why Dayton is a good spot to open your business. That's kind of what our goal is there. I mean, and I think it's, we're not, we're not thinking it will be a, you know, a huge extravagant thing. It'll be a nice, real quaint thing at the Aggie. And we've met with the superintendent there. It's a beautiful facility and they're willing to host it for us. So, and we're, and we're sponsoring it, right? So the, the chamber is getting business sponsors to pay for it all. So really looking to see how we can, again, facilitate, you know, businesses in Dayton and Berkeley, you know? Because those two areas are not like Taunton and Rainham.
That's the whole thing. We, we just have to keep that in mind at all times.
Right.
I mean, we don't have the highways, we don't have any of those.
Exactly, exactly.
Have the sewer.
Right.
Throughout the town. That's, that's a lot of, a lot of problems together, you know?
Yep, challenges, yep, yep.
I don't know exactly what we would have and how we would set it up, but let's say just a table. Do we have any money to actually like print up like a nice vinyl banner? Go in front of the table that introduces like the town or who's there or, I mean, could we come up with a couple, a hundred dollars or so to, for the, from the, we're on it right now, or any budget we have at the moment is the selectmen's budget, right?
Correct.
Correct. So I guess it would be like, is that a possibility that if we need a little bit of money to just do some printing? Including like a banner? Your money's available?
Well, that's how much money you're looking for. You know what I'm saying? My, my suggestion is figure out what you need, get an estimate, submit it. There are many ways to fund it.
Okay. Do you have, does anybody have any, like, I was just, you know, speaking, we were just speaking like a couple of weeks ago and, and you said, hey, the Trails Committee is a great, you know, thing to maybe bring into this, right? Because it's a tourist, it's a tourist draw. And, and so the way we were looking at it is, the Trails Committee, right, has some great, Dayton has some great trails and some great places for families to come as a destination. And then, you know, on a Sunday afternoon, they hit a local pizza place or something like that. So it draws people to the local businesses. Are there other groups that we should invite to this that would be helpful for Dayton, right? As a draw, as, you know, as something, you know, as a draw so that we can let other people know that are going to be there that this is the, a great thing about Dayton. You know what I mean? What else draws people to Dayton? You know, besides the rural, the farming.
History.
The trails, the history. I don't know, do you have somebody from the historical commission come or something?
Lenny is on that historical, I mean, Rafa, sorry, my name.
No, I was going to mention, does Dayton have like river cruises? Like in the summertime or spring until?
That's a good idea.
Man, that's a great idea.
Any town that's close to the river would be great. That would really surely attract.
Yes, I like that.
Wow.
Cruises that offer dinner, lunch, whatever.
The only issue that we have is the only place would be over off of Pleasant Street. And then the river is very shallow in that area there. So I, I've been there at both high tide and low tide. High tide, you can get out with a small boat. But if it's low tide, if you have anything over a 20-foot boat or something like that to actually go off that ramp. You're going to hit sand. One business that would probably be nice is like some kind of a canoe type of thing. kayak, paddle boats.
Yeah, water amusement park.
Yeah. Maybe what we can do is determine where the depth of these things are. You know, how deep is it here? Maybe create a, what do they call that? You know, those floats that go on, on the water and then people walk out there and have all of these things out there to.
Like a dock?
A dock.
Are we allowed to do that on the, on the water because the water is ours or is it shared?
Listen, we, we got, we got it all over here.
I think the important thing is to reach out to a developer that would want to invest in something.
A business person that, exactly like that.
It's a great idea.
It's a great idea.
Maybe a couple of floating restaurants.
Here's an idea.
There's other places like that, floating, floating, not floating, those mobile restaurants, the mobile kitchens. You know, the park out there and serve the people, you know?
Maybe half a dozen of food trucks, different cuisines, just summer, fall.
A lot of reserved for food trucks. They better have some business.
Well, yeah, that's why you have to invite everyone to hike.
Anything is.
But the, his question was, who from the town?
Right.
Committees or individuals that we want to ask to attend to help promote. What is the suffer, what are the opportunities?
Exactly.
Do we have like an help itself?
Clean areas, is that what you, what you said there? Just to be out there on the open air and just enjoy that. I, I think, I think it's, it would be, it would do well once it was promoted properly. I think everybody would go out there, have some benches out there to sit down and eat or, or even just put some sort of like outdoor barbecues that people could go there and have that. sort of like, uh, outdoor barbecues that people could go there and have that if there was nothing to eat. There's so many ideas. It'd be like a nice bar.
Waterfront music in the summer.
Oh my God, install teepees right by the river.
That's a cute idea.
Well.
That will attract young people. You're only, you're also be promoting historical, of local history. You're attracting young kids, you know, to get you in all this local stuff. Maybe a replica of, uh, the Dino Rock.
But that's his question of who, what other committees or people do we want to invite?
Right.
I was like, we're just promoting that, what are things you could do with the river, but, but.
Sort of commission or also the historical society, we just. Planning board.
Well, who's the representative of planning board? He's going to be there, so.
I know. I think we, I think we've answered his question for now.
Okay, we're good.
Well, I, I think the game, the game warden would be one that we could talk to. That they police the river there.
Harper Master?
Guy there.
Harbour Master.
Harbour Master, yeah, thank you.
Oh, that's a good idea.
That would be.
We don't have enough landmarks in town. Like, I would love to have like a European type park, you know, where you can put nice benches, maybe a fountain. We don't have any fountains, you know, like water streaming out. I mean, these like classical mythological statues that'll attract, you know, people. Make it, make this town look more sophisticated, but at the same time maintain its rural charm. We can do that.
I don't know, I, I.
Look at Charleston, South Carolina.
Discussion with Pat Menjies. And what, some of the things that we're talking about now are things that he's talked about when he was on the board of selectmen. And it's, it's always been a dream. As a matter of fact, he said, you know, don't let the dream die. So when I hear Rafa say that, I, I think, because many of us are busy with many, many things in our lives. Would this board be okay with forming a subcommittee to help look into that? Or to try to reach out to a developer who could work with us, uh, to develop something like that?
Is this, um, over on town parks and rec land? Is that what you're talking about?
Well, it could include park and rec. I mean, the, the idea is to have a subcommittee of interested people that would like, like people like Patrick. Uh, you know, you mentioned park and rec, Kevin's up for a lot of things. Maybe the harbour master as well of what areas won determining what areas are ideal for that. Secondly, uh, reaching out, advertising to developers that potentially could come in and help support.
Will that, will that, this plan though that we're developing, like, are we getting ahead of ourselves?
I think this is, Mike's shaking his head yes, so.
Getting ahead of ourselves, Mike?
Well.
You're muted.
Muted.
Can't hear you.
Yeah, I said a teeny weeny bit. I think we are. So like, I mean, so these ideas, so these are all things in my opinion, in my experience. So would be, would be reflected in the, so in the plan. So with action steps or raise based on the buy-in that we would have from the community to do food trucks, to do, uh, you know, these type of things, to then go, oh, you know, make sure we have the zoning and other things in place really to move it forward. So, yeah, like, I mean, I, so and we'd be able to do really, so some place making. So, which is the term that a lot of this stuff is, oh, you know, like it's called. So a place making along the waterfront. So like what the plan would recommend is place making where we make the waterfront, the riverfront, oh, more of an attraction. And then we put the zoning in place really to be able.
Good job.
Hello?
Yeah. Did that make sense?
It does.
Yes, and, and following up on that. I don't know, but Wayham just got a developer who's investing $30 million into their waterfront. I'm wanting someone out to that developer. If he would either give us advice or even be interested in expanding what he did in Wayham. Or if not wanting to do it himself, that he might be a lead. Hey, go talk to this guy. He might be interested. Or give us ideas of what, what potential, you know, just taking a trip down the river and looking at that spot or that spot or no. You guys, you know, it's either not deep enough, wide enough, you got all kinds of.
I don't think we have enough waterfront area on the river to accommodate a lot of things, you know, big things. I, I, I'm not trying to put anybody.
We've heard that argument before, so, I mean, it may be the case.
I, I, I wish we did. I really do wish we did. Even though the, the, this parcel that was sold at auction some time ago. Parked right up, up the road here that the town actually own, I believe the town owns it. You know a park I'm talking about, Mike?
Some side of the park?
That right beyond the, uh, the nursing home or whatever it is up here and going towards diagonally across from the police station. Isn't there a piece of land there that the town owns?
No.
It's a park, isn't it?
No.
Oh, it's sweet snow.
No, okay, all right, okay.
Oh, yes.
That does not go to the river. Am I correct?
No, it does.
Yeah, it does. Yeah.
I think it does.
Yeah, it does.
There's actually a bench, like a picnic table.
Yeah.
I, I'm really not sure. I haven't been out there, so.
Yep.
I, I think that's a good idea to reach out to this developer if we have a name. I actually have a preference for who I would like to have talk to the developer though among this committee, which would be John.
Oh, I agree. I was just gonna say, John, do you have time? No, I agree.
Yeah.
Sure. Um, so would you move the person?
No, I don't.
Okay. So I'll, I'll hunt, I'll hunt the person down.
No, thank you.
And really it's asking, it's like.
Cause Mark Bocico went down there. They had a whole big press conference that Mark Bocico attended.
Okay.
So maybe Mark's office could help.
Yeah, okay. Yep.
Yeah.
They have tons and tons of waterfront there.
And it may just be him being, you know, nice enough to give us ideas of which he's not, you know, interested in or maybe he knows somebody else. But he could just like say, you don't have enough land. It's too shallow. Or, yeah, you can, you just have to scope it this way or.
Yeah, yeah. Cause I noticed in, um, in the brief here from Serp Ed, they, they have Shaw's Boatyard as a community development site listed here. That three, three and a half acres of, um, open recreation and conservation potential for redevelopment is high.
Yeah, I don't think he wants to sell. He's got a booming business down there.
Oh, I see.
I, I was down there during the campaign and spent. So I always thought the same. And whenever in time I said, no, 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 I mean, you know, as you get older, it gets less fun to run a business. But right now he's, he's booming.
That's the deepest part of that area there is where he has those, those boats.
Doesn't mean he, if he has room, he might not be interested in expanding a little bit to allow somebody else to come in and do something on a piece of his property. Who know? I don't know.
But then again, he talks.
Yeah.
You know, if a developer comes in and that's a potential site and the number's nice and he retires to Florida and.
Yeah, exactly.
Never know. I mean, there's, there's a business out there for everything, you know? It's just a matter of reaching the right person and, and stuff. But that's, that's a tough, uh, tough area there. Very wet on the outside. And, you know, when you walk on over that grass area, a lot of areas are very mushy. So a, a lot of work would have to go into it to stop that.
Yep, yep.
Just to keep them, the meeting going, this is informational, so it's not really on the agenda. But, um, John had, you know, informed me that, you know, because the town of Dayton is a, the Taunton area chamber of commerce, um, as a town that its officials, whether they're appointed or elected, are able to comment no charge to events. Um, and you can find them on their website. Actually, the next one is a networking event on April 13th and Rafael and I have both signed up to attend.
Oh, great.
So, you know, we'll just see how that goes, but it's open, you know, just, just FYI, it's open to anybody who might be interested in, in going, so. The other thing that we're, and I think Serp Ed is expecting us to do this before our April meeting. Uh, cause we do still want to meet a regular April meeting towards the end of the month and we'll set that date. Is, um, to go over what their initial data brief was. And be able to, as they said, sit with it, meaning look at it. Then I don't think, Mike, correct me if I'm wrong, they're not expecting us to give them feedback prior to the April meeting? As much as they just want us to digest this and be prepared to talk intelligently on April?
So, you know, if we have any overarching feedback at this point, they wanna, so they want to keep the process going. So, uh, so we were, so if we're gonna respond to it, if we want to see any different kinds of focuses, that we let them know now, so then when they come back to meet with us in late April, so they can, um, already have those focuses focused on. So they were preparing, I mean, they were hoping for a little bit of feedback at this point, if there was any. I mean, so the committee might also think that where they are, what they've been focusing on is always good. And everything works and, and at that point, everything's great.
Well, my first, um, comment is just technical, which is the, the link that they provided is obviously meant for web use only. Not at all printer friendly. Can't print that, what they provided, you just can't, if I hit print and have it come out. I actually had to manipulate this quite a bit to print something here. And more than that, it's actually, looks like it's designed for mobile devices. It doesn't even work properly on a PC. At least I couldn't get it to. It's kind of, so just in terms of being user friendly, I think just the formatting is a issue going forward. The question I had too, and other people can jump in if they have questions, um, on the land used by acre, which is on page two. Are solar farms represented in terms of these categories? I, I mean, it might be embedded in one of these. I just don't know where that would fall.
So they would, so yeah, they would, um, so if land is transferred out of chapter, it then becomes commercial use. So I can check, but I think it may be commercial.
Commercial, okay. Makes sense. I just wasn't sure. And the other is. And the other is vacant, which I'm assuming they just means privately owned, heavily wooded. I mean, and maybe some of it's town owned property too, but, I mean, we just have a huge percent of what's labeled as vacant land.
Yep. That's a good point. I'll follow up on that. Okay.
On your printout, the percentages?
They don't give percentages.
Okay.
Yeah, they just have the pie chart, just the pie chart, so, yeah.
We get the acreage for each of those categories, um, identified?
I guess the town would have to pull that or if we have it, or I don't know if Serp Ed has that. But Mike, it was the question, if you heard, was land used by acre instead of just percentages, if we could actually see acreage?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, if they get a percentage, they'd have to have the number backing that off, I think, to, to Patty's point. So that shouldn't be difficult at all.
Well, they could just change the title, land use.
Yep.
Yeah, obviously. On the next, which is zoning, um, and this was actually not really specific to this, but, like you had mentioned that, um, in order to help Serp Ed, you had pulled a lot of information and put it into or pulled it out of G I S. Does the town use like a specific G I S, whether it's an open source platform or something, some license that they have for private software?
So we have technology and I'll share my screen in a minute. Uh, but yeah, we do have, um, it is called a C I A, uh, C A I, I'm sorry. And I will share it right in a moment.
There's just a big block of text blocking your screen. It says, this meeting is being recorded. I just want to get rid of that so we can actually see.
So yeah, yeah, we do have our own G I S software.
Where's the data there already where you can, it overlays like water, sewer, roads, wetlands, zoning. Is that all just different layers or are those things that? This is probably not Serp Ed, this is probably us to try to like add all that to the, to the map.
So we have a zoning layer, um, we also have a zoning overlay district layer as well. Um, and then so FEMA layer, a FEMA flood map layer with D E P wetland layer as well. One of the things we don't have, um, so, and I actually had a conversation with our sewer department about this. Um, as part of our work, um, on this project, uh, we don't actually have any type of, we don't have the sewer layer. Oh, and the sewer is under the town domain, if you will. So we should, um, at some point, oh, like have a sewer layer within our G I S. Where we don't have a lot of control over, um, is our, is our water layers. Because we, the water district are a separate district. I know the Dayton Water District has their own G I S software. And they have the water layer and they have a water layer. They actually, um, have shared information from it with me. Oh, like for Serp Ed, so I believe in their first data brief, oh, Serp Ed provided this information. Uh, but in their, but in their second data brief, uh, they're gonna get into specifically the water and sewer layers based on the water and sewer maps that I provided to them.
And is, um, wetlands a layer?
Yeah, right here. Yep. Yeah, do you see the, uh, the wetland blade just pop up on my screen?
Yeah. Is that map online or is that just private in-house? It's on the software?
No, no, it's completely public.
Okay.
Let me have a link to it on our website.
You do? Okay.
All right, great. Thank you. Again, people can jump in if they've got, if they're, they're thrilled with things I marked, so. On the page about, you know, major corridors, redevelopment sites, community development sites.
The page that you were.
Page number five. With numbers. What is the status of Zenica right now? And I just don't know. So ownership, remediation that was done in the past. Suits that are ongoing. I have no idea, so.
The, as far as I know, the status of Zenica, uh, is that they're uh significant environmental issues. So that is it, and that is a brown field site, and um. And I think the, the um, so there's a lot, so yeah, there's a lot to it, which, I mean, I wouldn't want to even try to represent, because, oh, you know, I probably would misrepresent something, uh, but there's a lot of environmental issues with that parcel, to say the least.
And the current ownership is still Astra Zenica, that corporation?
Yes.
There are any, does the town have any leverage at all to like, you know, force them to clean that, you know, clean that spot up, you know, um, you know, EPA regulations or anything, can the town, you know, kind of force that issue, is there any way to do that, do you know? I don't know.
I honestly don't know.
I don't know the full story, you know, closing EPA was involved. They've done, complete. There's certain areas that have been fenced off, and they're no man's land.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
How long that's to be that way, I don't know.
Does, would the town attorney, would the town attorney, like, is that would be the person that would know, like, who would know, right, how can we get?
Years ago, um, my son was building a house right just beyond it, on the opposite side of the river, and I actually spoke to one of the attorneys for Zenica, and he just told me that they had tested the whole area. And it did, and they did test on the property that my son was building on, and he said, you guys have nothing to worry about, because nothing got to that point.
To your son's side?
I'm sorry?
To your son's side, you mean?
Correct.
Not that far, okay.
I said, what is going on with that, and he goes, it's way too long of a conversation to get into, to get in over the phone.
Yep.
Uh, we are working on it, but they really had no, no good things to say to me, me good.
There are probably rules of how long it does need to stay still.
Question.
So yeah.
Mr. Mullen. Just wondering.
So you woke up, Lenny, what did you say?
Said I have a question for Mr. Mullen, in regards to that, would you be able to inquire about any reports that exist in regards to the Astra Zenica properties, and where they're at as far as um, one, identifying brown sites, two, if cleanup is complete, uh, and three, if there are still issues that are unresolved?
Yes, absolutely.
I'd actually sent uh Mike and Lenny an email um not too long ago, asking about what are called bright fields, which are solar arrays built on brownfields, not contaminated land, it's a brownfield, um, because there are like 10,000 contaminated sites in the U S, a lot of them in smaller places, and they're just sitting there, and so this is something that, there are issues around it, but it's doable, it's a little bit more expensive to go into, because, so I actually asked if maybe Jim Akiar could come to our next meeting and talk to us about what are the risks benefits of doing solar on a brownfield, um, you know, what are the things you have to be aware of, and and all that kind of stuff, uh, because a lot of towns are doing that, you know, it's, has a relatively light footprint, obviously you have to get in and out, in and out, but you're not putting pillars down into the ground, you're not technically disturbing soil, you know, if it's been capped in some way, I'm sure that helps, so, but it, ask if, you know, Jim could come to our next meeting and help maybe talk to us about that, and.
Did anybody look into whether or not they could put that on like concrete slabs on where that was capped off?
Mr. Ferry has been looking into that in regards to the transfer station, because we were thinking about developing a solar farm at the transfer station.
Right.
So he'd be a good person as well to involve in those discussions.
The other day I went to Austin, and on the way there, on the left side, I think Avon, if I'm not mistaken, is a huge landfill that was there, and it's all covered with solar panels.
Yep, yep.
And all it is, is concrete slab, and pillars, solar panel on it, I, I mean, I don't know how much of uh cover they have on, over the membrane that's there, but if they have, you know, a foot or so of coverage there, a machine can drive over that and be able to set those things in place.
Mr. Ferry has that information.
He does have that.
Yes, because he's been working with the EPA in regards to that.
That would be, I, I think that would be a great spot to put that in.
The transfer station or Zenica?
Transfer station.
Transfer station, yeah.
Even, even Zenica, but that's privately owned, so.
I know, I mean, it would be like, you're sitting, you, you have land, you're paying property taxes, and it's just empty.
Yep, oh, oh, maybe.
Can't come up with somebody that wants to put a solar farm in there.
Yeah.
And then we get the tax, get it going.
I, I don't know if you're aware of that there are solar panels being installed now, and the land is still being able to be, you know, uh, developed in the sense of not developed found and and putting plants and and stuff like that, in fact.
That's happening on Middle Street?
Tree, Tree Mountain Street.
Tree Mountain Middle?
Tree Mountain Middle, yep, that's what's happening there, those things are gonna be off the ground by 14 feet, and uh, interesting, yeah, and they're still gonna be farming it, on the other end, it's gonna be part of the same thing, they're gonna be raising cattle underneath it.
Yeah.
Oh.
Experimental thing, but I think it's worthwhile doing, you're getting multi-use out of it, as long as those panels don't do something to the meat.
Right, exactly, I don't think they know, but it's been studied for a long time. One business in this town that I haven't heard anyone mention, and I'm very curious, I always hope someday that we could do a site visit and talk with them, is Aquarium on Route 138, the.
Could you explain that for John?
Aquarium, is that?
Aquaria, you just could explain it for John.
Right.
What is Aquaria?
Right, is that, yeah, I don't know what it is.
Water treatment, sanitation.
Oh, oh.
Salinization plant on Route 138.
Oh, okay.
In North Dayton. Sell primarily to Brockton, um, Mr. Mullen was involved, I believe, to some degree, um, when he was in Brockton, Mike, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Have contact information with Aquaria, if we wanted to do a tour and find out what potential there is there in regard to the water, or them selling, or land that you might be able to share with us, or give us easement or access, if we wanted to do anything along the river?
Yeah, so um actually, uh, almost three weeks ago, I reached out to a former colleague in Brockton, who um, who was very much involved in this, uh, like from the Brockton end, and has, and has the contacts with Aquaria, uh, to make, oh, yeah, to help, uh, you know, to help work with us to pursue those goals, honey, um, I have, I actually haven't heard back, so, uh, the conversation now actually just turned to me, like I am following up with him on that, to see if we could pursue a conversation.
Dumped a lot on your plate, so if you give us contact information, you know, we can, I'm sure one of us would be interested in helping you with that, you know, just, if nothing more, to set up a meeting where they come to us, or go to them.
Yeah, no, no, I appreciate it, Lenny, yeah, like on that, yeah, like I just reached out to him again, I texted him, so um, usually I hear back fairly quickly.
Thank you.
I also had a, I had sent Mike a question, I knew it would probably take a while to get an answer to, um, but, and I was hoping that Serp would give us some idea, because right now, the revenues that the town gets from businesses, it's property taxes from commercial business, and then personal property taxes on equipment, and the personal property taxes is almost as much as, it's not quite as much as, but almost as much as the property taxes, but, so obviously two different businesses go into the exact same building, both paying probably the same property tax, one could be generating a substantially more amount of revenue for the town, just based upon personal property, and all the equipment they've got in there, that kind of thing, so I was hoping, you know, Serp, one, I was hoping to get an understanding of what the town's, how that breaks out now for Dayton, but also what would Serp would recommend in terms of, what are the types of business, if you're really looking for revenue, what are the types of businesses that you're looking for, that, they're not only gonna pay the property taxes, but they're gonna generate additional revenue through personal property tax, so, um, so I know that, I'd sent Mike that email a while ago, and so, I did offer to help him pull the information together if he needed help, but, he'll ask, he needs help, so.
So yeah, I should dive into that, but I will, yeah, I actually said it on help with that as well, because that's a really good, that's a really good point, you know, in terms of leveraging, in terms of leveraging that revenue, for sure.
I, I spoke to Carol some years ago, because when I started on this committee, in the very beginning, people were actually coming in to us to talk to us about, one guy came in and spoke that if we would get rid of the property, personal property tax, that they would expand their business, but until he knows that, they don't have to pay for the, the thing there, so I, Carol, the only thing that she ever said, I'm sorry, uh, was that if you can find another way to, for, for me to get money from, until then, don't even think about it.
I, I did have a similar conversation with her, and she did explain to me, and and there, I guess there are two or three towns in the state that don't have personal property tax, um, that gets passed on to either your commercial businesses, or the residential tax.
Right.
So the bottom line is still the bottom line, if you do away with personal property tax, somebody else is gonna have to pay for it.
Yeah. It's, it's a substantial amount of money, I mean, my son is in Taunton, and he just bought a, a new excavator, and they just sent him the tax for that, $700, for, for one year, you know, so, it's, it's tough.
Notice that we have um the highest rate compared to our neighbors, um, and I did want, have a question, if anyone can explain it to me, just familiar with um, that we use a split tax rate, so what is the split tax rate, what does that mean? Does anybody?
A split tax rate?
Yeah.
I would imagine that would be for some of your home businesses.
Well, I think in here, they're talking about that a lot of the towns have one flat tax rate, residence, business, they all pay the same, if that's the tax rate.
Right.
We have one for residence, one for business, and they're different.
We see that.
Well, ours are different.
The commercial industry is 26, residential is 14, that's the split.
Okay.
Others like.
Straight across, like Berkeley.
Like Berkeley is just straight across, everybody pays the same, residence, business, everybody pays the same rate.
So I, I, when you were talking about having a, um, network with Berkeley and promote ourselves to potential businesses, I, you know, had the thought, if I were someone looking for a rural agricultural, you know, community similar to ours, and I had a choice between Berkeley and Dayton, I would choose Berkeley, because it's significantly lower tax rate.
Yeah, yeah.
Right.
I mean, significantly.
Yeah.
So.
So that's, that's what I was gonna say, right, the schools and that sort of thing, I don't think Berkeley has the investments in school.
That, that might even be a benefit as well, I mean, they're not.
I, I don't know, I, I guess a lot of businesses think about if we're gonna locate here, we're gonna have employees here, those employees are gonna be using the town services, right, so the, so you want them, yeah, I mean, usually, it's, the more services the town offers, it's better for the businesses' employees, right, um, so that they're living close to home, right, and close, uh, close to business, you know what I mean, so, but that's true, it's right over the, the other side of the river, so it's not that far.
They do provide education to business, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
But, yeah, has that ever been considered?
I actually did not know that all the, the, their commercial tax base was, had the same as residential, so any.
I'm not sure the breakdown, off the top of my head.
Think they may have changed?
It's, it's pretty close, but it's.
It's right, it's.
It's right in there, yeah.
They call it as being identical.
Our commercial rate is 26.17, and theirs is 13.75.
Yeah.
So.
Quite a lot difference.
You know, it's a huge difference.
We may hear a lot about that in the survey.
Yes.
You know?
Yeah.
And.
And it's just a concern of mine, I think, in terms of networking, and we're promoting to local businesses, and we're, not that we don't want to partner up with our neighbor, I agree with you that there are many similarities, and that we should support each other, but is it, you know, if, if, again, if I were a business, a potential um business prospect, I would probably choose Berkeley over Dayton, I could buy a house in Dayton if I wanted Dayton's services.
Right, right.
But then again, you know, the residential is more too, but, I don't know.
Good point, yeah. That's what, that's what I meant about, how do we promote Dayton, right, I mean, what are the things that you wanna promote about Dayton, right, to make it attractive to businesses, that's our, that's our goal, right, um, so, how, you know, how, what, like, you know, I mean, when we were talking about the Trails Committee, and, or the Trails resources that we have in town, and that that can be a draw to people to come here, right, either come here to live, or come here to start a business, or come here just to visit and spend money here, right, and that's another good thing too, right, so I think that's, the more we can come up with things that are great about Dayton, right, um, is gonna be helpful for us as, to accomplish our goals.
One thing, and this is North Dayton specific, unfortunately, but for any power intensive industries, access to Taunton light and power is a substantial saving.
Yes.
Over, you know, the alternatives.
Yes.
So unfortunately, they don't serve all of the Dayton, they serve North Dayton.
Yeah, Dayton, North Dayton, yep.
That is a big.
It's huge.
Huge savings for them, yeah.
T M L P is a great resource.
Yeah.
Yeah.
This is another question I had for Serp, they had said, how fast is Dayton growing? And then you're projecting um decrease. And they're projecting decreases in metro region.
Yeah.
And still increases in Dayton, but at a much slower pace than Dayton has seen previously? And yet at the same, I'm sorry.
No, no, I, no, no, it's okay.
And yet at the same time, you know, we're hearing about South Coast Rail and the impact it's gonna have on the area. And I'm just curious, their logic in terms of putting that together, of predicting, you know, population growth?
John, I really, what I just read, they take into consideration the problem that we've had over the last couple of years with water. The moratorium for building.
What was this?
Oh, so it looks like our growth has slowed when it's really an arbitrary break.
It's an arbitrary break. Both is going very soon to take off in this town. The moratorium is going to be ending soon. Water District has said they are very close.
Submax.
To, no, they're very close, making the purchase on Brook Street. From Somerset. That will end the moratorium. They're anticipating.
What does that do going forward when last year they had the wells down to just about nothing? So now they buy this.
If they, if and when they close the, the deal, Jeff Clunin had said they anticipate closing the deal this summer. That will give them the water they need to end the moratorium. So developers can start developing again. That becomes a big issue because of the MBTA. You, you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Right now, developers aren't really looking into Dayton because of the moratorium. Once that moratorium ends, Jeff has said, they anticipate, and Jim has said, things will start to take off, which not only creates problems, you know, for schools in particular, but it's also gonna generate more revenue in Jim's department, planning board, and for the town because of building permits. Jim is also working with this anticipation with a group of individuals in the town on an impact fee bylaw, which will have a significant increase in revenue to the town, because developers will have to pay a greater percentage to deal with some of the, or some of the impact that they'll create, Allah schools, more police, more fire. So, I wonder if Serpide is really aware that this moratorium is holding us back and it's gonna end soon.
I just.
Alan, I, I would, just wondering, um, do you feel the same way in regards to that? I know we've had some discussion with Mr. Clunin.
So, I mean, it's really, so, yeah, for me at this point, it's really hard to say, Lenny, I mean, I get the, and I agree with the general logic that, um, as South Coast Rail goes, so will the region grow as well? Uh, but I just don't know, uh, you know, based on the developments, um, that have been permitted in recent years, so like where and how any new growth would really fit? I mean, I, I'd also like to think that through this process, we have the ability to really control how that growth happens, so in order to prioritize the more, oh, you know, the more economic development and commercial growth, rather than just housing growth. And I think we have the ability to do that from this process, so we can better really chart our own future, so rather than leaving everything up to chance with housing development as well.
Because I do know one developer in Dayton is chomping at the bit for that moratorium to end, and he attends about every two or three months, a water district meeting, inquiring when the moratorium is going to end, so he can.
So it's someone that's already started to develop and, and, and he wants to?
Time development.
I, I'm skill, still skeptical in regards to the, the water district, because last year, no one could water their lawns.
Right.
They couldn't wash their cars, even though they did anyways, but the, the, the whole thing is, all of a sudden now they're buying, uh.
Significant amount of water from, I mean.
And that's gonna change all of that for the existing plus the future? There's, all of a sudden this water shows up just.
So, and, we'll end the moratorium. Well, how much potential growth?
Can they handle?
No, can they handle that? I don't know. But I know for the short term, it will.
Okay. And, and that's both for North Dayton District?
No, no, talking South Dyne.
South Dyne, okay.
North Dyne's got as much water that ever gonna want from Taunton.
From, oh, is that where it's coming from?
I mean, one project in particular, if they can get by their conservation issues, is Strawberry Fields. What are they talking, 25 houses?
25 what?
How many houses were they talking in Strawberry Field?
They were talking in the 90s.
90, wow.
I mean, and some of them were apartments.
Oh.
Three units, uh, per.